And we are recording.
We're good to go?
One more, still letting them in. I'll say.
So being 6:30 and having Quorum, I'll open the Town of Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, being 6:30 PM. I'll read the Governor Baker's order from March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible, no in-person attendance of members of the public we've permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded, and within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and or other town's social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Patrick Driscoll, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Ajemian, the Vice Chair, Mrs. Jean Garina, the Clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, Mr. Stephen Geller, and we also have two associate members, Ms. Astor Rojas and Mrs. Julia Santacangelo. During the meeting, all the boards, all the votes for the board will be taken through roll call. The following Bridgewater Town staff are also participating remotely. Ms. Jennifer Burke, the Community Economic Development Director, Mrs. Jasmine Farinacci, the Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Azu Entenaro, the Town Engineer, and Mrs. Leslie Do, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask you a question by listing your name and address and your your name and address and your question. The host, which is Mr. Jennifer Burke, will recognize your questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. They'll be recognized when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. I would like to take, well, we can't take seven o'clock out of order yet, but.
Chairman, just before you continue, I'd just like to note that Mr. Entenaro is now the DPW Director for the Town of Bridgewater and not no longer the Town Engineer, so I would just like to point that out.
Okay, thank you. And then so we have a couple of meetings this evening that we have a public meeting and a couple of public hearings. If everybody's okay with it, we'd like to take the public meeting first, which would be the Perkins Foundry Edgewood Development is here to give us an informal presentation and just an update what they're working on. So if the project representatives would, if we could unmute them and they could give their presentation, then we can have board questions after that.
Steve.
Mr. Jerry, yeah.
There you go.
So I do have a set of slides. If I can share my screen, I'm not sure if that's enabled, then I can run through those.
You should be able to.
Okay, I mean.
Let me stop mine.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Jimmy.
There may be some people on this meeting here for Old Field Estates.
You know, and I started to say that, but we don't have that scheduled till seven o'clock. So I'll make, I'll make, we can make the announcement at seven and then just continue it to a date and then people can can log off.
Thank you.
I thought exactly the same thing you did, but then I looked down and I saw it was seven, not 6:30, so.
Okay, let's make sure I do this right. Okay, so does everybody, is everybody seeing the slide?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, so my name is Stephen Meltzer from Edgewood Development Company. With me tonight is Jerry LaRusso and Joe Bartucca. We've come and we are going to spend a few minutes just introducing what our vision is for the redevelopment of the Perkins Foundry property. We didn't bring any of our engineers or consultants with us. We thought just principles tonight would be great, good for the for the introduction to the project. We'll go into as much detail as you want, but I sort of want to just give an overview. And the goal for me tonight is to, you know, I have a lot of slides, but there's a lot of pictures, so I'll run through them very quickly. I want to give you folks a sense of our vision for the project in the Perkins land, an idea of who we are, our capabilities, and what is motivating us to do this project, the challenges we're facing, from permitting to market-based challenges and site-based challenges and whatever other challenges, and there are many on the site, and sort of provide or talk about a blueprint for the possibility of moving forward on this project. Just for everybody on the board and everybody in the public, I've actually made a PDF of these slides and posted them up to the web. And they are available for people who don't use Facebook. They can go directly to PerkinsFoundry.com, and that'll lead them to a page where they can, they can click on a link for the PDF or Facebook users. There's a Facebook page, and then there's a Facebook group in case people want to provide us input. The site is, I'm sure most, if not all of you are familiar with it. It's the Broad Street site, just on the other side of the tracks, just north of the tracks. Currently, the Henry Perkins Company is on the site. They have just started up their operations in 1848. They've been in continuous operation since 1848 as a foundry. As you can see from the aerials and the plan there, they've got sort of a conglomeration of buildings that have grown up over the years, starting in 1848, and they've added on. I'm sure some has come down, but there's a, there's a nice cluster of different kinds of buildings, and I'll show you in some aerial photos what it looks like. And there's a little bit of the history of the foundry and the gentlemen who are running it now, who I'm not sure if any of those of the Perkins group is on the, on the Zoom tonight, but I think they were going to try and join us. So as I said, there's a, there is a mix and mash of lots of different buildings right now on the site. And I get that I went out there and I took some, some drone video, and you can see that there is a a lot of buildings on there. There's a lot of impervious surface. There's a lot of disturbed areas. And it's just been been well-used over the years. And we have a vision to to redevelop the property in its entirety. We're going to be taking down all the buildings and or our hope is to be able to do that and do site work on the property. That shows a little bit more of what's there now in an aerial view looking northwesterly. And our hope is to develop this property into a mixed-use type of property. In front is a purely mixed-use building, commercial and residential. And in the back, also residential building and possibly some commercial as well. I'll give you some of the details of what we're thinking about. But just to to sort of, you know, I've spent some time reviewing some of the Bridgewater publications with respect to the planning and zoning and some of the aspirations of the town. And from that standpoint, what we hope to do with this project is bring in influx of new residents into market rate units within walking distance of town, create a fair bit of new commercial retail and restaurant space close to where people are living and with its own parking, so it won't stress any of the parking that's already downtown. The project is going to be a over $40 million investment in the, in in the overall site costs, and it will probably end up in a, an increase of over $450,000 in new tax revenue to the town. Because we are hoping to do only one and two-bedroom units, it should have a low impact on schools and other town services. It's, it's, we hope to convert that back portion, and I'll talk about the zoning a little bit later, convert that back portion from industrial to this residential use, so it would eliminate industrial traffic in and around the downtown. We're going to clean up the site. We're going to remove the old contaminated buildings and clean up the entire industrial site, which, as you probably know, abuts the town river. And we'll be working with or are working already with DEP to deal with some of the soils on site. And just as a, as a quick background, we've been now working on the site probably for about a year and a half. We brought before the Jennifer and other town services a presentation just to show them what we were thinking about doing. So we've been working on the site for quite a while, very familiar with what's going on out there and what our challenges are. So as I said, the front building is a, is, and again, these are our aspirations for the project. We don't know where we'll end up, but the front building is about 12,000 square foot footprint, three stories with a mix of commercial and residential. And I just have some more renderings of that. The second building, possible mixed-use as well, mostly residential, one and two-bedroom apartments, four stories for that, and the clubhouse and open space. And that whole middle area inside of the U has a green space and pool and outdoor amenities and the clubhouse for use of the residents and also maybe a public meeting room and in public spaces like that. So for, in total, 150 to 170 total units is what we hope to accomplish, all one and two-bedrooms. And then probably our hope with this site, and I'll talk about some of the things we're doing further down on Broad Street as well. We hope that that we can possibly bring between 15 and 20, 25, maybe up to 30,000 square feet of new commercial retail space as well, which we think in conjunction with the new residents, it should be great for the downtown. So as I said, these are, I'm just going to show you some of the renderings of the, of the different areas. This is the mixed commercial and residential in the front. Another rendering of that area. And from a different view, as you can see, the Midas is the existing building there. And that's coming, that's a view northerly as you're coming north and looking left on onto the site. That's the, the building in back with the parking. And I also, you know, I've spent some time just so I could understand what you folks have been going through. I, I attended many of the last few meetings that that you had with West Point Realty to try and understand what the challenges are that you have and your priorities. So we use that in our design so that we could accomplish some of the things that you seem to stress, which is, you know, the aesthetics of the pitched roofs and especially on the clubhouse and on the larger building back. And here's some more renderings of the amenities that would be in the space. Now, when I talk about the potential for the commercial and retail, we're talking about in that front building. We're also thinking about the appropriateness of it in the back building, probably in the the front portion of the back building, which is closer to the, you know, the Broad Street access. And then recently, just within the last couple of weeks, we've been able to gain control and have under agreement, if you see circled in pink there, the two residential houses. One is partially commercial, but it's most, it's two-family, and the other one is two-family, which is not being used at this time. We do have those under agreement, and we anticipate that we'll be able to convert those to and make this part of the overall picture and convert those to commercial as well. It's probably most likely going to be a single-purpose commercial building based on the market that we've seen lately, so that's all factored into our ideas about what and how to promote commercial activity from the project. I want to just take a minute and talk about us so you understand what our, and then we can get back and talk about the project some more. As I said, a little bit of an introduction to us. We are, we're sort of a vertically integrated company. We, we build these things, we build them ourselves, and we keep them. The idea isn't to permit and flip or to permit build and flip. We have LaRusso Corporation is, has quarries and site work and roadwork. Edgewood Development, that's essentially me, searching out properties and opportunities and taking them through the permitting process. And Joe Bartucca, who I said mentioned earlier, is with us, and Joe and Jerry LaRusso is with us as well. The, the principles of these firms are intimately involved in the planning and development process, because after we get it permitted, Willow Creek Builders, which is, which is Joe, will be building this project. And then Lakeside Management, which is Joe, will be managing and maintaining the property. Our goal is to, is to build these and own them and manage them forever. So we take a lot of pride in what we do and how we do it. Talked about Edgewood Development Company, Jerry LaRusso, Joe Bartucca, and myself. I won't, I won't go over these in detail, but they're there for you to take a look. And if you want to, if you have any questions about us, we certainly can answer them. We also have a pretty good history with respect to, or I'd say great history with respect to multifamily-type properties. Most recently, Liberty Station in Walpole, which is downtown Walpole, right in the center of town, is brand-new, 152 apartments, 252 bedrooms. That is, we finished that up, and it's about 50% leased up at this point. Residence is at 1022 Hancock Street in Quincy was a conversion of a, an old schoolhouse into, into condos. Those were converted and built and sold off. Edgewood Apartments is an asset of ours. We built that from scratch as well. That was a Friendly 40B in the town of Plainville. 120 apartments in that building and Chestnut Apartments in North Attleboro, 56 apartments. We made, we built those, maintained them, and hold them in our portfolio. And we welcome anybody if they're interested to see those, tour them. But otherwise, you can, you can look at the information online with regard to them. Our team for this project that we've put together is myself and the Edgewood Development Company team, which is Joe and, and me and Jerry. Our engineering team is Bowler Engineering, Architecture Market Square. Wetlands Engineering is Power Corporation. The Environmental and Geotech, which is sort of the dirt. The outside environmental, we've engaged McPhail Associates for the buildings. We've engaged Smith and Wessel. Our traffic engineer is McMahon, who I think has worked extensively in the Town of Bridgewater. And Kirk and Company did our market analysis. And as I said, we've been working on the site for about 18 months, so we have some challenges with respect to DEP, and we're well into the process with DEP to deal with some of the soils on the, on the, on the site. Power Corporation and the Wetlands has already gone in with us to the Conservation Commission, and we've done an ANRAD, and we have an ORAD from the Bridgewater Conservation Commission, and that's essentially sets out the boundaries of the wetlands. And Bowler has, and Market Square, as you have seen, the renderings have done a lot of work for us in putting this together. We have some challenges out there, and one of the biggest challenges is that the site is transected by the, by the zoning line. The first front of the site where the mixed-use building is, is in CBD. The rear of the site is industrial B. Industrial B does not allow for, for multifamily housing, so we have to find a way to deal with that. We do have some ideas, but just to talk about the process a little bit, what we're going to be going through, we are going to need some kind of rezoning for that back portion in order to put multifamily back there, whether that is through the planning board and the town council, redrawing the maps, or doing some other kind of rezoning, or going to the zoning board of appeals to do it through a variance process. Then we, once we get through that hurdle, we'll have to come in for site plan review and special permit application with you folks. We'd have to go through the Conservation Commission and do a notice of intent in order to get an order of conditions. The front building at least is within the, within the historical commission jurisdiction, so we'll have to go through their process for the demolition of that building. And we're, we'll work with, with Jennifer and the rest of her staff to make sure that we, we hit all the permitting that we need to do. And then in addition to that, we have to deal with some state jurisdictional issues. As I said, we're working with DEP right now on what's called a BUD beneficial use determination so that we can reuse some of the materials that are on site and keep them there. DOT as well, because it's state highway, we're going to need to get permits from them for curb cuts and maybe some additional state permitting as well. So our big, I guess, or first big hurdle is dealing with the fact that we are in that industrial zone and working with Jennifer over the past few months. And we, we, as I said, we started the process back in October, presented to many of the staff, and I've been trying to work with Jennifer to figure out the best ways to deal with this. And there are a lot of different ways that we could. First would be to amend the zoning map, maybe that, make that back portion CBD, and then go through the permitting with you folks. There is the new Chapter 48, Section 3A zone, which this might be a perfect fit for. I know that the, some of the state agencies are working on some guidance to try and help towns deal with how they implement that, but that, that new 3A requirement mandates that towns have an as-of-right multifamily district in order to preserve some state funding. And I understand from Jennifer that you extensively use that state, those state funding grants and available funds. And that, and at the same time, if we are able to do it that way, that creates also a 10% affordable component. As I mentioned before, dimensional variances and use variances from the ZBA is also a possible route that we could take. There's also, I said amend the zoning map, but they may also want to amend the zoning map and do some tweaking of the zoning bylaw, which Jennifer and I have talked about, or something else that I know you folks have considered when you were going through some of your drafts to redraft your, your zoning bylaws is the Innovation District, which permits an entity like us to propose for the town council a development proposal that specifies a mixture of commercial, residential, industrial use and site development requirements to be used for a specific site. I think that would be, that would be great if we could do that, but, and I know that you've considered that as you've gone through drafts of and redrafts of your zoning bylaw, but that might also be a way to make this work. Our next steps, I guess, you know, we're hoping to get some consensus, to get an understanding of how you folks feel about this. We've talked to Bill Wood, I don't know if he's on the, on the call or not, to see how the, how he feels. This is his district and the town council, sort of get buy-in and, and find some way that we can all work together to make this a great project for everyone. And I think that would include us in the planning, you, the planning board, town council, staff and members of the public, and see how they feel about it, about, you know, the desirability, the feasibility of the disparate aspects of the project and the best way to go about it. As far as our plans and what we, we're going to do, one of the things we're going to continue to pursue our beneficial use determination from the DEP, keep going with our planning. We're going to keep trying to, to work with some of the landowners around the project to see if we can improve those as well. We will be planning to come back into you and in case there's zoning changes that do come about in order to protect the current landowner, the Perkins folks, do an A and R plan. And that would basically be, the purpose of that would be to freeze the current industrial uses. And we'll probably, unless you tell us that we should be following some other course or you want us to go in a different direction, we'll probably start putting together and get filed our, our variance applications, just so we can keep the process moving. So I just wanted to, you know, this is a slide I had up front. Now, we've been through it, just to make sure everybody knows that they can see what we posted and where they can see it. And we have a bunch of other pictures, a gallery that you can peruse through to see some of our other projects and what some of the other things we did. That's our Walpole project that just came online. And, and just so everybody, you know, we've done residential development, single-family homes, commercial development, industrial development, multifamily development. And our goal for this site, you know, we're developers. We do it to make money and to make a living. And we think that, you know, we could, we could build almost anything here. We could do any kind of industrial, commercial, but we think the best thing for this site is what we're, what we're proposing here and what we, and that's what we hope, hope to accomplish somehow. And we'd really be appreciative of input from the board and from the public and see if we can get this done somehow. And with that, I will stop talking.
Mr. Meltzer, if you don't mind, can we just pause this for five minutes? We have a seven o'clock public hearing, and it's seven o'clock now. That's, that would just, that we have a continuation request for. So I just want to, I just want to notify the people that are here for seven o'clock that it's going to be continued. Read that into the record and just take a vote. It shouldn't take more than five minutes, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. Do you want me to stop the share, I guess?
No, no, that's, that's, that's okay. So for those of you that are on the, the call for this evening, we have a public hearing at seven o'clock, which was for a major modification for Old Field Estates. at seven o'clock, which was for a major modification for Oldfield Estates Two, which is long-built homes. So Mrs. Farinacci, I believe we received the continuation letter for this?
Yes, we did, and I'll, I can't share it, but the request was continuing till the seventeen.
Record for us?
Yes, I will.
Please.
Absolutely. Evan Watson said, "Thank you for speaking with me earlier today in regards to our public meeting for the major modification for Oldfield Estates. On behalf of the applicant, I am requesting that the board continue the meeting till the next available public meeting on the nineteenth."
Okay, so, so just for clarification, everybody on for seven o'clock for Oldfield Estates Two, the major modification, we have requested to continue that to May nineteenth at six thirty, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we had discussed the nineteenth, we have Barrett Planning Group coming as well as a, a new subdivision. So I, we had discussed continuing it until June second. Evan Watson wasn't opposed to that.
Okay, so do we, do we have a motion to continue this to June second at six thirty?
I'll make the motion to continue the Oldfield Estates hearing till June second at six thirty.
So a motion by Mr. Gemmian, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Mrs. Garino, second, any discussion? I'll take the roll call, Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Gemmian?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. All right, thank you. So just anybody on for Oldfield that's now on, what's the date again?
June second.
June second.
June second. There will be no second, there will be no new notices sent, so it will just be on the agenda for the second.
Okay, so if we could resume to the Perkins Foundry presentation, I'd open it up to board questions at this time for the developer. Questions, comments for the developer from the board?
I'll start, just some things off the top of my head. First of all, Mr. Meltzer, I, I wouldn't, skinning the cap on one of your slides, I think that's not gonna go over well. The, I'm just curious, why the size of the unit? Why so many units in this spot?
Well, there's a certain, I mean, to make it affordable to and, and profitable, you have to have a certain number of units based on the size of the, of the lot, the price of, of the, of the land. And it's just, it's really a math problem, and that's how it's, how it's calculated. And, and what fits and what's nice, you know, we're not trying to, we're not trying to maximize the density here. We're trying to do a good project, something that the, the town can be proud of, and something that somebody lives there will really wanna enjoy.
You know, we. I understand. I'm just saying, are you, are you saying that in order for this project to go ahead, you need this number of units?
Well, we need a certain minimum of units. I don't, you know, as I said, one fifty to one seventy is really the, the target here. If it's less than that, it may not become affordable, it may not be affordable to do, may not be economic to do.
Is there any reason why you set everything back and not put it on, on Broad Street itself?
Well, we don't own the land. The only place that we own the, the land on Broad Street is where that commercial building is, where we did put a building. And the three-story building, and then the, where the two houses are, the, the Midas property, the Napa property, the, the fast food that's there, that's, we don't own that. I mean, right, Perkins family doesn't own that, so we can't put it there. The land, that's where the land is, so that's where we put the project.
Any way of trying to put more commercial in there, what you have?
Well, there's only a certain amount of commercial that will fill up. A, as you know, there's a significant amount of empty space in the shopping center across the way. If we put too much commercial, it'll sit vacant. And we, we're not trying to create a shopping center here. I don't think that'll be good for downtown. And, and it wouldn't be good for us either. I just don't think that, that we'd get the, the tenants. And so we're trying to find the right balance of commercial to residential, trying to, as I said, bring, bring in a lot of people who will be using commercial spaces. There's also a little delicate balance in creating too much new commercial where we'll end up, it'll just end up sucking the, sucking the commercial activity from downtown perhaps to the new stuff, and that's probably not desirable either. So we are, we're looking for that balance as to, as to what it is.
One more question right now, for now, and that is, have you done any studies as to the need for so many residential units in Bridgewater? In other words, prior to putting this together, are you basing this on some projection in terms of number of units Bridgewater will need going into the future?
So we did have a market study done. That was Kirk and Associates who did that market study, and, and they determined that, that that we, that this, at least this number of units, we'd be able, from a market standpoint, we'd be able to fill very quickly and efficiently.
Okay, that's it for now for me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments?
I, I have a couple, I guess. So, does a piece of property include that house that is next to Perkins? Is that part of the property also?
Yeah, that's one sixty-eight Broad Street, and it does include that, and that's, that's on the southern side of, of the access. So yes, it does.
Okay. Is there any plans to redo the sidewalks of Route Eighteen along the front of the property of Perkins?
Well, we certainly, you know, there'll be, there'll be some improvements, including, we think it's probably appropriate to put some, some crosswalks and flashing crosswalks for people who want to go across the street and, and do their shopping over there, who are living in the apartments. And as I say, we are a road construction company as well as other things, so and, and we, we want the entire area, to lift the entire area up as far as its usefulness and aesthetics, so it wouldn't be an issue or a problem to be improving the sidewalks. Probably would be helpful to us as well.
Mr. Geller?
I'm good for now, thanks.
Any other? I have a couple, but if somebody wants to go first, go ahead.
Oh yeah, you guys seeking any density bonuses from the town to be able to do this, or are you gonna be able to do the amount of units you have planned as?
Well, so that's a sort of a chicken and egg problem. If it's, if it's CBD zone, then we won't need any density bonuses. If it goes by, because it's, you know, there's, there, there is no formula for the density in the back right now. But if it were CBD zone, we wouldn't need any density bonuses because the CBD zone, as you know, calls for eighteen units per acre. We have twelve acres, that's over two hundred units, and we don't think that is appropriate for, for that many units anyway, so. So as I say, it's sort of a chicken and egg, but you know, if, if it goes CBD, then we don't need density bonus. Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
So, Mr. Meltzer, just, so just so I'm clear, is, is your preferred route to get the rear of the project, is, is, is your, is your preferred route to get the entire project in CBD?
My preferred route is to, to do it in whatever way works best and, and most efficiently. I, I, I don't, it doesn't really matter to us how it happens. But if, if the planning board or the town council thinks that that's the best way, then we're, we're okay with that. If the planning board and town council or whoever powers that be want us to go the, the variance route, we'll, we'll do it that way. But it's really, whatever gets the job done. We don't, we don't really have a, have a, you know, as far as process goes, it, it's really, for us, it's outcome determinative. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so I, I mean, just if you're looking for feedback, I, I would like it to go the CBD route, and I'll, I'll be CBD, but. So what, what percentage, so we have, we have that in, in CBD, we have the entire first floor. So, so let me say, I would be against removing that two hundred, two hundred feet, though. I, I'd like to see it, it goes CBD, but either have the entire first floor, or has there been any thought to make in that building out front, all retail on the first floor? And offices on the second, third, and maybe doing too small?
I know it's Pat cut out, because I can't hear him.
Yeah, he froze.
My question is, has, has there been any thought to make in that street-front, fronting building? Oh, was my internet gone?
No, you're, you're here now.
Has there been any thought to make it, because I think CBD, if, 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 if the town council and the public feel that's the best route, is the best route to go. But I would like to, I, I don't like the removal of the two hundred foot. I don't like the introduction of that two hundred foot setback.
Yeah, but the problem is, you know, we don't think it's workable to make the, that, that's fine, but, and I think the planning board has the, has the discretion to waive the requirement that the entire first floor be a commercial in the back.
Well, I guess, so I guess my question is this, is, is nothing prohibits the second or the third floor from being commercial as well, so.
You mean on the, in the front building?
So, so could that entire front, I mean, I, I think what I, if, I think what I would like to see is the thirty percent met and have that entire front building be retail office, et cetera, and then the residential out back. Put the thirty percent commercial out front, and then all the residential back.
I, I hear you, but even if we did that, we wouldn't hit thirty percent?
How far, how far, even if you did that and the buildings down the street?
That, if we did that and the buildings down the street, that would probably get us to, hold on, I can do the.
And then you could, you could do some of that building out back, the first floor, towards the Broad Street side.
So, so I, I guess I look at it, I, we can certainly, we can certainly look at all of these options. And, and we're happy to explore all of them. What we don't want to do, as I said before, is just because of that thirty percent number, create vacant space that stays vacant for a long time. But we're, we're happy to look at all the possibilities and all the options and see what the, the market says, but if the, you know, the, if the market is telling us that you're just creating space that'll stay vacant forever, I'm, we're not, we're not thrilled about doing that. And I don't know that that's really, from a planning perspective, a great idea. But we do think that creating a lot of commercial space is good, and, and maybe we should be focused more on how much commercial space, but not the, not the percentage necessarily, just, you know, if it's, if it's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand feet overall, that's a lot of commercial space. The, the shopping center across the way, in total, is only about a hundred thousand square feet. We just don't wanna have a glut of commercial space that's, that's empty, that's all. You know, I understand your consideration and what you're looking to do, but.
I mean, just as one member, I, I'd be open to the zoning change based on the public and the council, obviously, but I, I wouldn't want to remove that too. I wouldn't want to introduce that two hundred feet. I think that could be dangerous for us throughout the rest.
Yeah, that's fine. As long as, you know, I think that you guys have the discretion to, to play with those numbers, and I don't think you need the, the wording change to be able to do that. I think that's already in the bylaw. I think you have that. You can make those exceptions already. As long as everybody can be flexible about it, then, as well as us, then that works for us too.
Any other board questions or just one comments? I mean, we, I know this is the first time everybody's seen it. We have a public, another public hearing coming up, so. Just to be fair to the development team, if people have thoughts after this, is, is there a way the, the board members can, you could email the slide to the board members and they can send comments to Ms. Burke that can get back to you if they come up later or something like that?
Absolutely. So, so the, the slide presentation is available at these spots. But I'll also email it to, to Jennifer, and and I'm happy to, to get feedback through Jennifer or otherwise, even on the Facebook page. You know, we wanna sort of gather up.
Maybe just so we don't leave you hanging, if, if the, the board has additional comments they want to make over the next two weeks, and then Jennifer can pass them all along to you or something like that, if they're irony. If, unless anybody else has anything else to say tonight.
Well, I just wanted to ask, you said further down Broad Street. Is that those two houses? Or is there more?
Those, those two houses, and we also did try to, did try to get control of the Napa site, but weren't able to. But as far as I know, it, you know, we've heard conflicting information about whether it's under contract or whether, or, or not. And if not, you know, we'd really like to improve the looks of Broad Street in front of our project, and that would be a good spot to do that. And, and I think, you know, that could be a great little restaurant spot or something, too.
Okay, thank you.
If it's not on your slides, I'd like to see the couple of the addresses of your buildings in other towns. I may want to take a look at them.
Oh, sure. Why don't I, I'll send links to Jennifer, to the websites of those buildings, which also have obviously the, the addresses of them, and, and we'd be happy to give you a tour of any of those buildings. If you, if you're interested, just contact me or through Jennifer or whatever you need, and we can, we can do that.
I really like how you did this public input. I mean, hopefully people can give us some public input and members can shoot Ms. Burke some, you know, some comments. Like, I know a lot of times after meetings, people say, hey, I thought of this, or I thought of that. Maybe they can get that information too, just to keep, keep everything open.
Sure, yeah, I'm, you know, your Facebook can turn ugly, but as long as everybody's respectful and, and.
I know you're brave to put it out there.
And I understand, you know, that, that, you know, we're in the business to be in business. And we, we will listen to everybody's comments. We may be able to do them, we may not. But we're gonna try and make this work for everybody, who, you know, we think this can be a great project for us and for Bridgewater, and we're, we're really excited about, about being able to do it, and, and, you know, it's, it's a big investment for us. But it would be a big influx of, I think, a great opportunity for the downtown, especially with the, the other project you just approved, sort of forming a bridge, you know, geographically towards this area. Could be some great stuff going on down there.
How long have you been working on the, evaluating everything?
It's been, it's been about eighteen months that we've been working on it. A lot of work and a lot of analysis that goes into a site like this because of the challenges. So, yeah, there's been a lot of time put into it and a lot of, a lot of resources as well with all of those, all of those engineers and stuff.
I'm sorry, I said it already, but do you actually own the property now?
No, we have it under contract with the, with the Perkins Foundry, with Henry Perkins Company. Which also, you know, it, it puts some time constraints on us. We gotta keep things moving. It's already been a long time. Covid slowed things down a lot. So we do have some, some time constraints with them as sellers and us as buyers. And it's obviously contingent on us being able to get permitting of some sort done out there.
All right, so we, if, if we don't have any other comments at this point, can we, if we have any comments or additional thoughts after going through this and look at the websites and stuff, can we get those to Ms. Burke? And then if there's nothing else, we, we have a public hearing that is supposed to start at six thirty that I'd like to hop onto. We, we just took the side of order, because I know they're waiting to get to us, so. Anything, any final comments? Okay, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
If there's any, if there's any additional comments, I encourage the board members to get them to Ms. Burke, and maybe she can put them together, okay? If there's any, if there's any additional comments, I encourage the board members to get them to Ms. Burke and, um, maybe she can put them together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. And for those, um. That are here now, I apologize that we are just getting to thirty-one Perkins Street, which is a store space building. Um, I do not have the public hearing notice, Ms. uh, Faranachi, Ms. Faranachi, do you mind putting that up or reading it until the record?
No, don't mind at all. The planning board will hold a public hearing on May fifth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM for an application filed by Store. Store Space, three thirty East Crown Point Road, Winter Garden, Florida, who is seeking a special permit approval under section five point ten and section nine point eight. Of the Bridgewater zoning ordinances to add a thirty-two thousand, six hundred forty. Square foot addition to an industrial building. Said property is owned by Demco Enterprises Realty Trust and is located at thirty-one Perkins Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Zero two, three, two, four, as shown on assessors map, twenty-one lot one forty-one. Areas owned industrial B and central business district. The public hearing will be held as a virtual meeting over Zoom. A link and instructions to participate in the meeting will follow. And be posted to the town calendar on the town's website at www.bridgewaterma.org. Recording of the meeting will also be posted to the town's webpage within forty hours after the meeting ends.
Okay, so, um, and Mrs. Faranachi, we also received the green cards for the, about a notification?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and then, um. All right, so just for anybody that just signed on, this is a, um, a public hearing for a special permit at thirty-one Perkins Street. What will, the, the way the process will work is we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation. Uh, board members will then ask questions and then we can put it in the public. Again, if you're in the chat or or you're a member of the public, please raise your hand or ask a question in the chat feature and we just ask you to. State your name and address, uh, for the record. So. Ms. Burke or Mrs. Faranachi, could you, th- this is different than we typically do things. This is the special permit is coming before us. Um, prior to the site plan, it's a special permit. Not for the use, the use is allowed in the industrial B and is already existing in the central business district, correct?
Correct.
So the point of this special permit is just to determine whether this is more detrimental or not. Than what is currently there and if it's, if it is or it's not, we make the decision and then a site plan is going to be filed at a later meeting, is that correct?
Correct. You're just determining if, if them altering the building is appropriate.
Is more, is is more detrimental or not, or 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 not detrimental, okay?
Correct. And then if if this is approved, they will come back and re, and file a site plan, which will be reviewed by. Uh, Mr. Itinero or whoever the town engineer is at that time.
Okay, so if, if the board, just the board's clear, this is just for the special permit to continue the use and modify the existing building. And our finding should be that it's not more detrimental or it is more detrimental, whichever, whichever one we determine it to be, so. Is, um, the applicant's representatives are are on the call?
Mr. Silver's here, are you there, Larry?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am here.
And we did receive a letter from, was that from Mr. Silver's office today? It's not anybody's letter, had?
It was, it was, yes, that was additional information to clarify why we were here before you. We had made it as part of an application, but we felt as though. A little bit more clarity in terms of how I was going to discuss that with you tonight would be appropriate.
Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
All right, and I would say to you that I have, um, representatives, um, uh, of. Of the storage company on the line with me. Uh, I think Sabrina is here and I know there'll be others and maybe other design professionals here too. Um, but, um, as we just indicated that it's not so much about. Um, those elements, uh, it's really more about the special permit. So what I'd like to do is just. To make sure that everybody, um, as you tried to explain a little bit. Um, that we are here talking about section five point oh or five point one oh. Of the, of the zoning bylaw and if you see that little handout that I, uh, that I sent over. That, um, and and I, and in quotations, it it basically is saying is that under provisions of section five point one oh. No lawfully non-conforming use or structure shall be changed, extended or altered in any manner until a special permit. Has been granted pursuant to section eleven of this bylaw. Uh, before granting a special permit, a special permit granting authority must. Find that the change, extension, alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental. Than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Well, okay, so that's what the bylaw says. And I just want to point out to you that it's not really about the use. Uh, and that's one of the problems with our bylaws is that sometimes the bylaws, um. Sort of use words interchangeably. Um, as in the beginning of that section, it talked about use. Uh, or structure, it says no lawfully non-conforming use or structure. In the last section, last sentence, they only use the word use. If we were talking about just the word use. Um, it is same use. Uh, it's a storage facility. Uh, now, and that's what it's proposed to be. So there is no change in use. All it really is, uh, being proposed here, and the other thing I did want to say is, because. The planning board in the districts that this building lies. Um, is, uh, takes the authority from the zoning board. And gives that authority to the planning board for these types of special permits. This is kind of a, a common type of special permit. That you see, that we bring before the zoning board all the time. In, in the, in the districts that they actually oversee, the residential districts, yeah, and so forth. Uh, you don't see them as much. Um, but that, be that as it may, that's why we're here. Uh, and because my clients are, um, they've entered into, uh, agreement with, uh. Uh, Mr. uh, D'Amelio and his company, who is the owner of the, um. Of the property, the Demco Enterprise Realty Trust, which is the owner of the building. And, uh, as part of their due diligence, they want to make sure that what they're proposing to do. Uh, is, is okay. And then they'll come back with the details, uh, in the site plan. Uh, for you to be able to approve the, the nitty gritty of, of what they're doing. So, um, having said that, uh, let me just give you a little bit of background here is that the. You know, the existing, uh, buildings at thirty-one Perkins, you know, this is part of a historic industrial. Complex that was developed, uh, in the early nineteen hundreds. I thought it was possibly late eighteen hundreds, but. It shows up on, um, assessors maps, say that, uh, the assessors cod says it was nineteen twenty-four, but however. Old Sanborn maps, which are maps that were done for the insurance company. Um, they suggested that the building was there in nineteen oh six. Uh, when most people that have lived here for a while, uh, refer to this as, um. Uh, the walkover shoe company, because that was one of the later uses of the building. Uh, but it, uh, primarily has been, um, related to the shoe industry. Uh, in its early days, uh, because there were LQ White and a few others in town. That was a big industry in Bridgewater at the time and, and also in surrounding towns and including Brockton. So this, uh, building, uh, i- it's. Probably one of the older freestanding buildings that are four stories or or more. That, uh, still take us back to that day when, when Bridgewater was very big in, uh, manufacturing and so forth. Um, and in, in, in the last decade or so, um. This has been, uh, the home of the downtown, downtown mini storage. And there was a small retail component colonial pet, um, and that's according to the, um. Uh, to the assessors cod, uh, which shows that there's, I believe it says, uh. A net area of like seventy-five thousand square feet of area, um, in the, uh, in the building itself. So the building is in, I want to say, okay shape, but rough shape. Uh, overall, when you consider that, you know, built around nineteen hundred or so and. And here we are in the next century, we, we already skipped one, so we're in, uh, this is the third. Probably the, the third century, but second century for sure. Um, I thought it was late eighteen hundreds, but. Uh, so what's being proposed here is to actually, uh, meet a, a need that is here in the. A growing need in the community in terms of, um, providing for, um. Uh, storage in a building, which is a modern type building. And so what they're looking to do is to basically upgrade, replace sections and upgrade. Um, the building itself so that they, uh, want to increase the, um, the number of stories. That are less than the four to bring them up to match the portion of the building that is four story. And that means bringing up the areas that are closer to the railroad tracks and bringing those up, uh, to match into the same roof line. Uh, in the, uh, information that we provided, uh, to you, it shows, um, some elevations. Prepared for by the architects, RCA, uh, RGA, I'm sorry, and, um, they. Um, they show the comparison between the two and, um. And as you can see in the, in the complex here in the footprint, that, that is, um, we're staying in the same. Footprint as what's there, we're just bringing up the elevation of the sections that are close to, uh, the railroad. Uh, to the MBTA, um, and the, um. There is also, if you could bring up the one that shows the view, the architectural sort of rendering of how it's going to look. There's a, a one that has color in it that shows, um. The view that you would see from the railroad tracks. See, that's right there, you see, that's the perspective of, of the building itself right now. That's looking at the. At the front of it, the top part is looking at the front and the bottom, uh, picture is the one looking from the railroad tracks. Okay, and then as you go down, you can see how massive this building is. And then further down and you see in the color up, you see how this is using, um. Uh, you know, modern technology in terms of how to, how to build these types of climate controlled facilities. Um, it's going to be a much nicer looking building, you know, uh, if I'm sitting on a train going through Bridgewater. I'd rather be looking at that building and saying that's in this town than the big four story, uh. Uh, wooden, wooden structure that, um, has been there for, for a hundred years. So, um. So all we're really looking to do at this point is to suggest to you that we're, we're going to re rehabilitate this building. Um, one of the requirements that came forward from the building inspector and we're in total agreement. Is that there were, um, there's an encroachment of the building onto the MBTA right away. It's like a one to two foot kind of encroachment in portions of the building and it actually showed up even on a nineteen. Sixty-two Sanborn map that actually showed that encroachment. Um, and that would be dealt with at that same time, so. We would be bringing it in, so it's, there's nothing going over the property line. So this only bylaw allows for. Um, allows for you to, um, grant a special permit. As long as you don't increase the non-conformity. But, um, the building inspector has indicated and I'm in agreement. That that does not mean that if you have an encroachment on a neighboring property, that. It's okay to continue that, that if you're making a major change, which we are on the, on the, uh, MBTA side. That we need to bring the face of that building so it's within the property. So it does not go over the property line. So that, that's part of what we will be doing. Um, as part of this rehabilitation. Um, and, um. That's, I, I think that what you'll find that it's, um, that what we're asking for is that if you're granting the special permit. Uh, our feeling is that we will not result in any increase in non-conformity and will be in the public interest. The new structure will improve the aesthetics of the site and area and will improve the values of the surrounding properties. Uh, the upgrade will not result in an increase in impervious area. It will not result in the structure that is higher than the existing building. And that access and circulation will be similar to that for the current building. And that we're, it's, and in my narrative, I say that it is respectfully requested that the planning board find that the proposed alterations to the. Existing buildings to be an enhancement, which does not increase the existing non-conformity, but actually eliminates the current encroachment. The property lies in the central business district and industrial district and the proposed use is consistent with that allowed. It is also consistent in that the current building is used substantially for that exact use. If granted, a site plan consistent with the requirements of section nine point eight. Will be prepared and submitted to the planning board for approval. The granting of the special per- permit will not negate the need for obtaining such approval. And with that, I would answer whatever questions that you might have about this proposal.
We have, uh, any board questions for, uh, Mr. Silver?
Yeah, I, I just have, uh, a couple of questions, Larry, um. Just, could you go into a little more detail as to what the original building is, what shape it's in and what it's being used for right now?
Well, uh, the shape that it's in, um, I don't know if I can speak to the structural part of it. I may have to rely on one of the. Uh, one of the team to be able to, uh, talk to that, uh, but, um. It's currently being used for, um, a mini storage, which is what this is going to be. But it's going to be a climate controlled mini storage, which is actually like a step up from just a, a, a place to be able to store materials.
Are, are you talking about, uh, renovating the original building also or just the, the new building will be climate controlled? I'm just, I'm just curious.
Um. Sabrina, uh, is there someone that could maybe sort of give a better overview of, of the extent of that renovation?
Good afternoon. Yes, uh, Bob Rice, Senior Vice President of Construction is here with us. And he's going to answer your question. The question is if we're going to make improvements in existing building as well?
Yes, we are. We are planning to do a full upgrade. To both the exterior and the interior of the existing structure in. Combination with the expansion project to give everything a uniform look and to improve the entire overall look of the entire property.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Silver, Mr. Silver, can I ask a question just while you have the, um, development team available?
Sure.
Mrs. Faranachi, I, I don't know if this was a formal comment. Did Mr. Solari ever, um, submit his, uh, request about the staircases? To us in writing?
He did not submit it in writing, no.
But I believe when we met with him, the one, one of the requests that he had or two requests is one that just that. That parapet didn't extend over the existing height. And two was that the, um. External staircases, was there a possi- possibility to make them internal and remove them from the exterior? Am I stating that question correct, Mrs. Faranachi?
You are saying that correctly. The exterior fire escapes. Stephen Solari had asked if they could be put interior instead of exterior. And this additional parapet here at the corner of the building, he had instructed that that couldn't be built. Because it goes over the height of the remainder of the building, it would be over the height for that zone.
A parapet wall?
What, whatever you would call this.
Yeah, no, it's a parapet wall, but he's saying.
The parapet has to come down. It can't be, it can't extend above the roof line.
That's fine.
Okay. I, I, I might disagree with that for that. Um, okay, so.
The other question was, is could this, could the, the other question we had is could the external staircases be?
Correct.
And it's just a question. I'm not saying it has to be. I'm just asking, is it possible?
May I address the commission?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so the exterior, the existing exterior fire escapes, um. Are part of the existing structure and to answer that question effectively, we would have to approach. The fire marshal and check current IBC regulations on that. Um, if it was, if they were made interior, I believe there are interior staircases in the building. In addition to the fire escapes. But again, I wouldn't be able to answer that without checking with the local fire marshal on that particular question. And we're not certain that that particular fire escape might even. It, it may be able to be negated by some of the new changes that are happening. That would take place during the, uh, building. Plan and building permitting process review, so we can address that or we could send a separate email to the fire marshal and ask. With respect to the parapet wall, if we are in excess of the permitted height of the structure. I'm certain that our design team could eliminate that parapet there. It was more of a design feature and we could. It was more of a design feature and we could come up with something that is both attractive for the aesthetics of the building and but also meets the height restrictions of the of that particular use for the for the property.
If we, I think for aesthetics, if you can remove those, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, it is quite possible that the the need for those exterior stairs was because of the occupancy loading that because this was a manufacturing facility.
Yeah, if you're able to scroll down and see the renderings, we can go ahead and if you if if you have the ability to to show the renderings, you can scroll down and we can take a peek at the renderings.
No, and and that can be something you can work out with the building inspector if they can be removed. But I just that was a suggestion he made and I thought it was a good suggestion just to further clean up the look of the building, that's all.
In in the event we're unable to remove them, we may be able to shield them with some type of abutment to the the wall or something. We'll have to explore that with them.
Okay, alright. Any other questions from the board?
That was it here I do. Is the intent when you talk about renovating the entire building? I noticed that you get that you're showing that you're really putting a new facade on one side of the building. Do you plan on doing any work to the facade on the other side of the building? Yes, on Pearl Street, I'm not looking at a building that's pretty like that right now.
I I I believe that Sabrina, you can answer that, somebody can answer that. But I I believe that the answer is that the same treatment is going to occur around the entire building. It's just that for the purpose of showing the the difference between the existing and the additional section that was going to be raised, the illustrations that you see right now are making that difference. You see in that the one that's on the screen now, it shows you can see the old building face. And then you see the new piece that's being lifted up the four story. But it doesn't mean that that section that's showing old there is staying old. That's actually going to be treated in the same way. Am I correct? Sabrina?
Our our plan is to infill all the windows on the back of the on the back of the building as well to give it a uniform look. So we're not looking through, you know, different types of windows. We don't want it. We don't want the building to look partially renovated or partially new and partially not. That that wouldn't be a look that we would be looking for. We're trying to give the building a uniform look all the way around on all four sides. And to bring it in conformity with current new projects that are being built. We saw the previous applicant's project and we feel that we would want to complement other types of projects in the area. And that's and that the answer is yes. Short answer is yes. We're going to go ahead and cover the entire building.
So this technically is not your final design?
No, this is only to show what expanded. The 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 section that was going up from one and two story up to four star.
Yep, and and I may be hitting this a little bit early, but because this is going to be a climate controlled storage center, there are no plans to put any huge HVAC units on this roof.
We wouldn't be able to put HVAC units on the roof if it causes us to exceed any height restrictions. If we were to do that, it would require a parapet to be put around the entire roof to shield anything like that. So any AC units that we typically put on the buildings are shielded with some type of covering. Sometimes we use split systems, but if we were going to use RTUs, if we are not able to put them on the roof, then we may have to use side discharge into the side of the building and cover them with, you know, with with some type of walls. Again, this is a rendering and not a hundred percent representative of all of the features that the building would have. But the I'll let Sabrina answer the question on the way we cover them.
So basically, I I just wanted to point out that we are going to make the building design compliant with any type of code that we can. And any type of RTU or any type of external unit at first is going to be, you know, passed by the city to be able to make sure of the conformity. Because it's of my understanding right now that because of the parapet, we are a nonconforming structure because of the height. Therefore, you know, in that moment, that I believe that will be a an answer that we are going to get more in the site plan portion. However, our main goal here is make sure that we show one building where one building unified and that's why we're trying to do as much as we can on uniform finish throughout the whole project.
Alright, thank you.
And keep in mind, they still have to come back for a site plan, so. Any other board questions for Mr. Silver or the applicants? If you don't have any more board questions, could we open it up to the public, Ms. Burke?
Sure. First person is Eric Belton. Has a question.
Hi, thank you. Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So Eric Belton, twenty-four Perkins Street. So my first question I believe was answered, but just to be clear, the entire exterior of the building, including where the the current daycare and the batting cages, that is in the plan to to renovate that that side of the building as well, even though as it stands, that's not where the storage facility is.
Mr. Silver, could you or your team answer that?
Well, I would ask members of my team to answer that. I believe the answer is yes. I would rather them answer that.
The answer is yes. Everything on that building is getting renovated.
That is correct. We're not going to renovate by portions. It's going to be a full development on existing property.
Just just to clarify on Mr. Belton's question, so there is a bridge connecting a building to the right currently, correct?
That is not, yeah, that is not part of.
Well, just 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 so Mr. Belton is clear, this 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 does not include the building to the right, correct?
That is correct.
Where the date where I believe he said the daycare is.
Yeah, current currently is this is a daycare and a batting cage. And that that building is is in pretty rough shape. I didn't know if this was the same, the same project.
That's a that's not part of this project.
Yeah, there is. So Mr. Silver, those buildings are going to be that the plan in front of me right now shows it looks like a staircase and a bridge. Those are going to be removed and it'll be two separate buildings now, correct?
They are two separate buildings. They're on two separate parcels. I don't know. I don't know what the agreement is as far as the the bridge.
But but just to answer Mr. Belton's question, the building to the right is not part of this project.
No, it is not.
Okay, alright.
My 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 last question was about the the is there any plan for additional parking as it currently sits? There's an extremely small kind of parking lot where the the your your current building stands. And in that street being a one-way street fills up pretty quickly with the limited parking. Is there any plan for additional parking to accommodate that?
There's no plan for additional parking other than what the site can handle and does handle now. I've done a lot of I did a lot of mini storages over over the entire country. And one of the big things about mini storages is that it's they're not big in demand for for parking and there's not really traffic associated with them. It's really the laws of physics inertia is probably the biggest thing that dominates that materials go in and they tend to stay in storage. And when you come and you take them out, there's not a lot of interaction like I'm going to go to my storage unit every week and take things out and everybody's doing that. There's a lot of traffic. There's very, very little amount of traffic associated with a storage facility. So I would say that we will be trying to optimize what we have available there. But there are no plans to to increase or acquire other parcels for for additional storage and so forth, for vehicles.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Mr. Belton?
Yes, thank you. My hope was that, you know, the other building would be renovated as well, but I understand that it is two parcels. So thank you.
Dr. Hunt would like to speak.
Hi, Carlton Hunt, eighty Austin Street. I believe, Larry, you said that the building was in the historic industrial corridor. Is that true?
No, I'm just saying as a as a term that it's historically, that's where the industries related to Bridgewater took place. I was not making a reference to a a district of sorts.
I think you probably should check and see if that building and maybe Steve Rogan knows it, but I believe that building may be in the historic industrial corridor that the state historic commission has some say about what you do to the exterior. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I get clarity on that comment?
The for me?
Yes. Talking about a local, the local start commission? Are you talking about another entity?
I'm talking if you were going to try to take the building down, you have to go to the historical commission in Bridgewater. But the Massachusetts lists this industrial corridor going all the way from High Street all the way down through and including the Perkins property. And I'm asking the question, is this building there? I believe Steve Rogan may be able to answer that question since he's got his hand up. It's the Massachusetts state level, not the local.
Yes, hi, Steve Rogan, thirty-six Howard Street. And I am the chair of the historical commission as well. It the building does fall within the in industrial corridor, which is designated on MACRIS. Also, the the building itself, it has it is listed on MACRIS, the MACRIS database, cultural resources database. So so those two will will it will be need to be addressed with the historical commission. So and in regards to when the building was built, it was built in eighteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also then just being thirty-six Howard Street, I can see I see the building from my from my house. And one of the concerns looking at they will one, not only is it the 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 historical aspect of it, but I looked at a few of the the renderings or actually some images of other store spaces online. And the the area that it's in, even though it is industrial, it's surprisingly like like my house is in the industrial zone. It's a very residential area. So the I'm it it it's going to there's some concern about will there be light pollution when coming into the the residential areas? Because Perkins Street, Howard Street, Pearl Street, those are all, even though they're in the industrial zone, it's majority residential. So there's a concern about light pollution for like possibly from the from some of the renderings I've seen.
So the light pollution we can pick up in the the site plan?
Site plan, right.
But is there are there any thoughts from town staff or your team as to whether or not we have to check on the historic historical nature of these and if there's any issues or not?
I don't believe that's an issue for this board at this time. I believe the building commissioner would determine whether or not it needed historic approval prior to any kind of demolition. So it's really not this board's jurisdiction.
What what is Matt? What is MACRIS?
It's Massachusetts Cultural Resources Inventory. I can I can share with either Jasmine or Jennifer the link to the to the documents so that I I can that you'll have those for you have those available. But there's the written documentation about the history of not only the building, but also the the corridor itself from that Dr. Hunt was talking about. It goes from Broad Street all the way to the High Street to to High Street.
So just the town staff. We're we're not bounding. All we really need to do tonight is determine whether or not the addition, so to speak, will make it more more nonconforming or not more nonconforming, correct? So if if there are historical issues and treatments and things that can't be changed, that can be worked out after the fact or or what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, that's correct. Your your mission today is to just determine whether or not the change makes the the addition is more or less not more nonconforming or not. And any light pollution, historic aspects, all of those things get worked out at a later date. They can't even move forward without your determination right now. So you need they need that determination first before they can address all these other issues.
Okay, any other public comments? So so Ms. Burke, Mr. Rogan and Mr. Hunt, Dr. Hunter, correct? If we're just determining whether or not the demolition of these areas and the reconstruction of these areas is more conforming or not. And then the treatments of those, the and the end design and everything would have to go if there is a historical component component, would have to go to historic HDC or whatever between now and in the site plan? Or the building permit process?
For the building permit process.
Any any other public comments that we see, Ms. Burke?
I don't see anybody else with their hands raised and there's nobody else in the chat. Jasmine, do you have anybody in your chat?
Nobody, no.
Any other board comments or questions for the applicant?
No, I I agree that much of what is being discussed should be discussed during the site plan. We're just talking now about special permit.
With that in mind, I guess I'd make a motion to approve the special permit.
Well, we have to close the public hearing.
Alright, yeah. So I guess I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
You know, I guess I guess my hope is that if we do, alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we have a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Jimmy. Any any discussion? Alright, so Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. So now we have to deliberate on the on the special permit. Thoughts on the special permit by anybody?
I mean, out of the standards I believe we're working under, I don't see any any ground to deny it. I certainly don't think it harms the surrounding area in any way. Quite the opposite most likely.
And and Ms. Burke, we're not, even though a facade is shown in nice historic colors on the facade is shown, we're not tying anybody's hands on the historic side or anything if if things need to be if different treatments need to be made on the exterior, correct?
Correct. You're not approving a site plan at this time.
Okay. So do we have a motion? If there's no discussion, do we have any discussion on the special permit? Of Mr. McDonald's comments? Do we want to make any conditions to the special permit? Are there any conditions that we should make, Ms. Burke? Such as the footprint shouldn't exceed the existing footprint? Height should exceed the existing height? Is there anything else that you can that we can think of? Height should exceed the existing height? Is there anything else that you can that we can think of? That, you know, the special permit doesn't relieve them of any historic or any other permitting agencies?
I think our special permit decision says that it doesn't relieve them of any additional permit requirements anyway. So I don't know that that's a needed condition. I'm not sure that there's any specific conditions that are required here.
Okay, is there anybody that can think of any specific conditions? Otherwise, we'll just make a motion with the standard conditions.
I'm just, I'm just reviewing our packet early, make sure I wasn't missing anything. I know there was some thought of waiting until, was there a chance to comment on this? Did I did I miss something like that?
Mr. McDonald, like I, you cut out for a minute, so I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I was reviewing our packet really to make sure I'm not missing anything. I, there was some thought of waiting until the town idiot comment.
Mr. Danero, I believe, was going to make his comments on the site plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I must have missed that. Okay.
There just aren't enough details on a special permit for him to review. There's there's no details here, you know.
Makes sense.
Okay, so do we have a motion to either grant or deny the special permit?
I'll make the motion to grant the special permit with standard conditions.
Mr. Jimmy?
Second.
But was that Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Any discussion? I'd just say, based on what we're looking at, under 5.1, our charge is just to determine if it's more nonconforming or or less nonconforming. That's if the footprint's not changing and the height's not changing, then I would I would agree that that it's not more detrimental. So just hoping that all the other, you know, requirements are followed, so. So if any other comments or discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Old Field is continued to June 2nd, so I think it's just the meeting minutes.
Alright, so just for a quick discussion. May 19th. We have a pretty full agenda. Ms. Door, do you have that in front of you?
I do.
We had a request by Mrs. Heine of the Open Space to start the discussions on open space at our May 19th meeting. Could we put her on? Could we put her on a committee on for, you know, I know it's a pack night, but maybe limited to 15 to 20 minutes?
I guess that's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's up to the board.
Right now, we have, right now, we have the comprehensive master plan presentation by the Barrett Planning Group at 6:30. We have at 7 o'clock, Maderos Estates Public Hearing. It's a new 10-lot subdivision off of High Street. We have a presentation by Clermont for a restaurant. And that's it.
Would anybody mind meeting it? What are the thoughts about open space that night for 15 to 20 minutes from the board?
I see no problem putting her on for and just tell her that we have a full agenda and that there'll be an introductory discussion, 15 minutes max.
Okay, and just just based on my, an email that I received from her, it seems like her committee had already taken a vote to join us that night anyway.
Would would anybody oppose maybe starting at 6:15? Or 6 o'clock instead of 6:30?
You know, I, you took, you you took the thought out of my head, but I think in her email, she said that they they asked to come in at 6:30, but
I don't, I really think that that's unadvisable. We had the Barrett Planning Group coming in and think we pay them by the hour, so we'd hate to have them sitting around and the discussion get a little longer than 15 minutes or whatever. We did put them on for 6:30, so this is a last minute thing. I don't think it's fair to the Barrett Planning Group myself, but it's up to you.
Especially if we pay them.
Do you wanna, do you want to do 6:15 or 6 o'clock and then just, we have a hot stop at 6:30 for the Barrett Group?
That's fair.
Maybe maybe Mrs. Heine could just reach out to her board members and tell them to bump it up?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And it's not something that we need quarant, so if every board member can't make it, it's it's not a big deal because it's just a public meeting. It's not a public hearing or anything that we need quorum for. So I mean, staff does, if staff can't make it, you don't have to make it, but I'd just like to, she set the meeting up if we could just do it at 6? Is the board okay with that?
Talking 6:15 or 6?
Whatever you, whatever we think we need.
Any frozen?
So we need, if you're going to have a planning board meeting, you need a quorum and you need staff there because you're going to have a Zoom meeting that none of you know how to run.
You're right.
So you need staff there and you'd need a quorum of the board because it's a planning board meeting, so.
So can we, can we do 6 o'clock and then just have a hot, you know, have the hot stop, you know, 10 minutes of the the normal start of the meeting? Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Alright, so we'll do, we'll start at 6 o'clock next meeting and we'll invite the open space at 6.
That was on the 19th, that's on the next meeting, yeah, it is.
The 19th.
And Mr. Chairman, I just would ask that in the future that if we could ask other committees or other people who are looking to come before the planning board to contact staff in advance so that we can let them know what your schedules are like so that we can avoid this situation in the future.
But I agree. So, okay. Minutes for April 21st? I saw Mrs. Greenow's corrections. Are there any other amendments to those, to the to the the minutes? Do we have a motion to, motion to approve the minutes?
Of April 21st?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Bye, Mrs. Greenow. Do a second. By Mr. Geller, any discussion? Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Board committee reports, if any? Directors report, if any?
Can you just make one more announcement about Old Field in case people joined late?
Oh, sure. So if anybody did sign on for the Old Field modification that was supposed to take place at 7 o'clock this evening, it's moved to June 2nd?
2nd, yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Yes.
June 2nd at 6:30?
Yes.
So that would be, that that happened, so. And then if if I email the three of you, could one of you reach out to Mrs. Heine and just let her know that we have to move it up to 6 o'clock that evening?
Yes.
And then just quickly under my report, just to let everyone know that I I think I all mentioned to you previously, I'm getting married beginning of June, so I am unavailable for planning board meetings in June, so I will not be present at your meetings. So Jasmine will be here. She's more than capable and should be able to handle your stuff going forward, and I will probably be back with you at some point in July, but you will not see me at all in June, so.
Yeah, but Jennifer, with Zoom meetings, you could just hop in anytime, you know.
Well, I made a promise to my future husband that I would turn off work for two weeks, so.
Alright, is this where you post your address for presence on the Zoom or no?
No, no presence needed. Leaving me alone for two weeks is present enough, Pat.
Oh, poor Jasmine for those two weeks. Alright. Anything else? Is Mr. Anthony Arrow still on the call or no?
No, he left.
He's not.
Left a long time ago.
Yes.
But we can't even congratulate him. Okay, alright.
I have, I think you'll likely see him again. I don't, I don't think you're going to be quite rid of him that quickly.
Oh, no, because he's, so I, he's still doing the review for Ceridum Way, correct?
He is, correct, for the 19th. No, he's he's doing it for the 19th, correct?
Okay. And he will be on the call on the 19th?
He will be.
Okay, alright. Do we have a, at 8:11, do we want to continue or do we want to adjourn?
Well, let's talk about that for a while. No, that's adjourned, crying out loud.
Is that a motion, Mr. Jimmy? Motion by Mr. Jimmy, do a second?
A second.
And Mr. Greenow? Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so. Good night, everyone.
Night, night, in two weeks.